I believe in the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation. Under God, in the visible, but to the repeat, justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. I do have one item to add under seven D, which would be the very last thing there. I'm sorry, because it's between C and D, whatever. It is a letter of support for the Derby Community Association for the T-Mobile Hometown Grant. If we can just add that. Anybody else have anything, or just not all entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition.
A motion made by David.
Second.
Second by Gail. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, public comments. Jim Carter has signed up, and he's here for the animal ordinance discussion.
Reason I'm here today is that obviously, as everybody's seen in the paper, that's there's these papers. There is a new animal ordinance that has basically been approved by the commissioners. They have to finalize this on the fourth of August. It's my understanding that should approve it then. The new ordinance changes the amount of members that are on the board. Previously, we had five members, and they were restricted board. Each member had to be part of a certain type of a group. Under the new ordinance, though, we're going to have seven members, within which the county council is responsible for the appointment of two. One of the main reasons I'm here tonight, excuse me, I'm going from air conditioning to heat. Reason I'm here tonight is that we need to fill up that board as soon as possible. We have five members. We already have a sixth member that is going to be appointed by the Troy Town Council. And he's already been pre-appointed, but until this is approved, it can't be done. His name is Adam Hoffman. So the last member that we can, that we're going to have is going to be appointed under the new ordinance by the county council. So the first thing I want to ask the council is please, if you know anybody that's interested in any kind of animal issues, please consider somebody, because this, we need to get this going as soon as possible. So after the fourth, then, any meeting after the fourth, then the council has the ability to then appoint someone, but obviously, it has to be published. So I'm just giving you a heads up under the new ordinance. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, we had a discussion at our animal control board meeting over two items, the main two items that we're talking about, what is the main problems? And one of the two main problems is the lack of an animal control officer, and the other one is major cat problem. There are discussions going on the board and disagreements. So what we discussed was been tabled until next month, but that's the two main issues. And of course, I want to push that issue, and I'm obviously asking the board, I can't do this until we go through this complete discussion, to consider asking the commissioners to farm and ask for a new type of restricted fund to take care of the cat problem. But this has to go through the board. We were having a big discussion on this at our last meeting. And so the different, there's different priorities. But until, when we get the full seven members on board, then we can discuss this and get this maybe finished by the last quarter. Obviously, with the amount of money that's available now, everything's getting stricter, and budgets are tighter. I know the problem's going to be, I know that we're going to be asking for the, probably the ability to get at least a part-time animal control officer, but that would be up to commissioners and the council to come up with the money and the ability to do that. So I'm just, I'm real quickly, just like I said, since this has been published, I think they have to do, they have to publish another time. But on the fourth, I'm hoping this gets resolved, and the commissioners go ahead and prove this so that you can, at your next meeting, you can advertise to get another member. Has anybody got any questions?
Thank you for the information. I saw the ordinance in the newspaper, didn't have time to read it all the way through, but does the county have a copy of that? Does the auditor's office have a copy of it?
Yeah, that's, I'm pretty sure it does, it should, because there was some discussion of who's going to pay for the 24, the 24 different articles in there, the two pages. So I know that was discussion. Like I said before, that was supposed to be resolved through your attorney, so.
Okay, I was just curious, because I asked Kelly in the auditor's office for a copy of it. I was going to give it to the council, but she didn't have it, so.
Right, I think it's through your attorney.
Okay, we'll find out. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Next up is Tracy Schroder, sworn statement for time back indexing project.
Good evening. I have to come before you every year with our sworn statement, saying that we have enough funds in the perpetuation fund to pay for office supplies, which includes paper, toner, travel expenses, recorder association dues, and service charges and different things. In the same amount, $5,025 as it was last year. And I am asking your approval for that sworn statement to be taken out of the recorder's perpetuation fund. And it was all explained in that letter that was sent earlier.
That's what this is. Okay. She has the actual copy of it.
She has the actual copy.
Okay, that's what I was saying, I haven't seen that.
And if it is approved, it has to be signed by everybody.
I had no questions. I will make a motion to accept this statement.
I want to make the second.
Okay, motion made by Corey, second by Brad to accept. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Looks like it passed seven to zero.
Right. And now I am asking, that we've been working on this back indexing project since, I think around 2012. We are getting closer and closer, and I am asking that I can hire or keep and hire back indexers to continue that project.
Paid for out of?
Paid for out of the recorder's perpetuation.
So you have one, and then one moved, right?
Yes.
And you actually have an opening that's?
I have an opening in the back indexing position.
So you'll post that or hire for that?
If I get it, you got to approve it first.
That's what you're asking.
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
I'll make a motion to allow you to hire the part-time perpetuating decks. I would put, second.
Motion made by David, second by Gail. Any further discussion?
I want to make clear, if we could, that the recorder's office has already been kind of dinged once in the recorder's office, the part that we control the budget of. And I've gone to the trouble, thanks to some folks in the auditor's office, to look at the way the perpetuation fund is being managed and ask Tracy some questions just before this meeting. Want to make clear that this is monies that the county council doesn't control. That is, the perpetuation fund is strictly within Tracy's domain, and it doesn't represent an increase in that portion of what she does at the recorder's office. Again, it's a bit much to ask her to, or it's a bit much to expect her to take a hit on employees one more time. I, in this case, because she's already contributed to us trying to save some money, it's one of the things that, because the difference between perpetuation fund and the recorder's fund, that I'm in favor of.
I agree with that. Okay, motion made by Corey, second by, we already?
No, it was made by Gail. I'm sorry.
It was the last one. Okay, this, this motion was David and seconded by Gail.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
I got confused with the last one.
That's okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for all you do.
Thank you. You're welcome.
In your office.
Thank you.
Next are the minutes. We'll do them separately, if that's okay. We have the minutes from the six twenty-six, twenty-five meeting.
So no changes necessary, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Corey.
I'll second.
Second by Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes seven to zero. And the next one is, I'll go to the minutes from last week, July 16th, for the special meeting. All in favor, motion made by Corey.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm staying, because I don't have here. So that is, motion passes six zero one. Okay. Next up. The next thing we have are tax abatements, and I have some questions about these. I tried to call, I tried to call Rod, but he was busy today. I had some questions about some things out here, and then since we got these CF1s late, I was just wondering if we could maybe table this and do it the next meeting? Is there anything that you're aware of that we can't, we have to do at this meeting?
Do you want to ask a question to her, or?
Well, here's the question, I mean, I can ask you the question. I tried to call State Board of Counts too, but they were busy, and they were, they're going to call me back tomorrow. I asked this last year also, but I never really got an answer on it that I remember. Let me get it here, sorry. Have them all together. It is on page two. Over to that, David.
On page two?
State, oh, the CF1. That's why I don't have it. Just one second, sorry. Here it is. Okay. It's on page two.
Which form?
Okay, it's the CF1 form, and it's page two at the top. It talks about instructions, and it says, "Within 45 days after the receipt of this form, the designated body may determine whether or not the property owner has substantially complied with state benefits." So my question is, some of these have dates that are back in March, April, and we're not within that 45 days. So should we, you know, how do you interpret that? Is that we should be getting these as they come in, instead of getting them all at once, one time a year? Are we okay to approve those outside of that 45 days? I mean, that's kind of, or do you want to look this up?
I think, I think, I think they should be providing them to you. You should be able to review them within 45 days. I remember a few years ago, we, there were some that, you know, were submitted late or not at all.
Yes.
And a vote was taken, and they did not get the tax, because of that. And so they don't follow the procedure, or the, you know, the, said by statute, you know, for submitting.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the people that are filing the forms that are not getting them in on time. I think as they come in, we need to be receiving them when they come in, so that the 45 day starts, instead of holding them from March or April till July. Because then we're outside the 45 days. It's no fault to the people who filled out the forms, right?
Absolutely, they did argue with them.
Yeah.
Why would it all, because, you know?
Yeah. So that was one of my questions, and then I just wanted more time to, to review these, because we received the state benefits, but we didn't receive the CF1s, right? So.
Till today.
Till today. We just got them around lunchtime, because I noticed that they weren't there, so. I would like to table this, but if, I mean, whatever you guys want to do, if everybody else has had time to review, I don't know how I was today, so I didn't.
I would like to make a motion to table this, because I've seen one here that it hasn't even been signed.
Yeah.
The SP1. There's questions that I have for, for these. And I haven't, when I got them, I wasn't able to match them all, because we had, in what was sent to us, they had some of Tell Cities in there, some of Troy's in there, and you had to sort it out. And by the time you get them printed out, try to find out which is which, these have to be matched up, and go through and see if they're compliant to what they sent. The SP1.
So is that a motion to table Stan, or?
Yeah, that's a motion to table.
We have a motion to table the tax abatements is?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Brad. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, motion passes seven to zero. And then, if we have any questions, Rod will reach out to you, email or call you. Okay, email's best, okay. Thank you. The next thing, do you want to go ahead with that? Or do you want me to do it? Okay, it's appropriation transfer. We have parts and wreck from maintenance assistant to equipment repair. I thought it's all you're here.
I didn't know what you wanted to hear about.
Yeah, it's okay, I'm glad to hear. You said you had a major repair for your work truck. What, what was that?
The tire, power steering went out.
Oh, that's good.
And then there was some other work that needed to be done too, so while I was there, I had to do the other work too. That's why the price is what it is.
Yeah, I wondered if it was like your transmission or something.
No, power steering.
Okay.
They called it rack and pinion, I guess I should call it that, but that's what they called it.
Okay. And so this is from your maintenance assistant that you didn't have for a while, so you had some money left. So you just want to move it over to the equipment repair.
Because I didn't have that much in my equipment repair code. Thanks a bill.
Yep. Okay.
I'll make a motion to allow.
I'll second that.
Motion made by David, second by Stan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I have one more missed here. I've got an appropriation transfer from HFI Grant, sanitarian assistant to the XRF gun, for the health department, if you want to.
Sure.
I want to know more about this, what this thing is.
Sure.
I read about it, but it's so small, I couldn't really.
Yeah.
So if you want to tell us what that is.
Yeah, so the XRF gun is the equipment. It's just, it's a handheld device that you scan. You can scan surfaces, you can probe soil, and it gives you the lead results. So what it is, is our sanitarian would go with me to, if we have, you know, a young kiddo who has a high lead level, we're required to go into the home and educate and try to find the source of the lead. So our sanitarian was recently certified to operate this equipment, so that in conjunction with me, we can work together to get the full picture of where maybe that lead poisoning would be coming from. I think I mentioned in the email, or yeah, I see it there. When we got the quote at the end of the year, it would be in 20, actually in 24, mid 24. The prices have gone up, but I did tell Corey that even with the price increase, this is the best price machine and equipment and package that we could find. And it is a requirement of Health First Indiana Dollars to have someone either on your staff that is certified to do this and have the equipment to do it, or to partner with a neighboring county or any county that has someone certified. What we have found, because we did check with that, the prices are astronomical. It is insane to me what, and that's no fault, you know, it's no fault of any other county, but the cost, we would be well over the cost of sending our sanitarian to training and buying this equipment by the time we did a partnership with a county twice. I mean, it was, it was well past the $30,000, so. It just makes more sense to, you know, have us do it in-house. But we would like to take it from the sanitarian assistant line, because as you know, with funding cuts in 2026, we were unable to fill that assistant position. So that does leave a surplus there, so.
So that gun actually costs thirty-seven thousand?
Thirty thousand four hundred seventy-five, I mean, with everything.
Yes.
So how long, I just have this question. You put that on your asset list, right, like for your department?
Yes.
And do you know how long that'll last? You know, we'll have to replace it, right? I mean, at some point.
Well, my, I, I don't want to say, right, I would think it, I mean, it's.
Do they have a lifespan?
I think it's, once you buy the equipment, maybe we have to update the, like, there's a, I don't want to say data, software is probably the right word.
Something about an app or something.
Yes, you have to have all of that with it, so.
That's great.
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Tara? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Paul.
I'll second it.
Second by Stan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, we have additional appropriations. Pre-trial prosecutor law enforcement donation for $3,500, and pre-trial prosecutor law travel for $2,500. Or anything else?
So we have that money currently in our pre-trial diversion fund. It's already there. It's just not been appropriated to a line item. We were asked by the state police, Southern SWAT district, I don't know their exact, if we could help fund a new drone for them, for their safety. The drone that they currently had to fly into residence when they're called out to situations where there's a barricaded subject, has gone down, and they needed a new one. So they reached out and asked if we had any money in our pre-trial diversion that we could help fund that. So we agreed to do that. And then while we were transferring some money into that fund, we went ahead and transferred some extra, just in case there's anything else that comes up. The law enforcement asks for some kind of donation to help. And then obviously, if we don't use that money, it just goes right back into our budget. It's just there. And then the reason we asked for more money in our training and travel line item was when we did our budget in 2024 for 2025, we had four prosecutors in our office. We now have four, because the state is paying for another prosecutor to be in our office because of Branchville having gone over the 1,500 inmates. So by statute, we were given another prosecutor. We all have training requirements that we have to meet every year. I'm not sure that we'll use any of it necessarily, but I would rather have it moved in there now, because most of our trainings that we go to are towards the end of the year. And I don't want to be scrambling in November, December, trying to get money into that fund, when I can just come ask for it now. And again, if we don't use it, it just goes right back into our pre-trial diversion fund.
Does anyone have any questions for Samantha? Yeah, we can do them individually. We can do the first one, the pre-trial prosecutor law enforcement donation for $3,500. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Make a motion to approve. Motion made by Gail.
I'll second it.
Second by David. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any names? Motion passes seven to zero. And the second one is pre-trial diversion, or yeah, pre-trial prosecutor law travel, $2,500. Motion made by Corey.
Second.
Second by Stan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. The next, you're going to have to explain. I don't know. Can you?
The next is the 40 public defender circuit court attorney for $312.23. The court gets reimbursed for popper attorney by the state. This money comes in and is received into this, this account. But to spend it, then it needs to be appropriated for that line. And that's what this is. It's not asking the county for additional money. It's money that has come in, but it just needs to be appropriated for that line, so they can use it for popper attorneys over and forth.
So that's both of those.
In both of those, or that way.
And it was advertised.
Yes.
I just didn't see one of these. So, one of these sheets were, explain that.
No. No, it just has the breakdown of the ones in there to show that it was.
But it does look like it was advertised, yeah. Typically, we would just want one of these, so.
But.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the public defender circuit court attorney for $312.23.
Make that motion to approve.
Second over here then.
Motion made by Paul, second by Brad. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And the next one is the public defender circuit court attorney for $26,494.93.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Brad.
Second.
Second by Stan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, Kelly. Next up, we have County Clerk Joan Hess with the MicroVote Machine Upgrade Presentation.
So I'm finishing my second full week of bad guys.
Got you some muscle already too, I see.
Glad to be back.
Thanks, I'm glad to be there. Tonight, I'm bringing with us Steve Shamo, who is with MicroVote, who supplies our voting machines and the like for all of our elections. Let me make it clear, we're not asking for money tonight.
That's good.
We're looking at the future. So he's here to kind of educate us on what may be coming down the tide, and to let you all know so that we're ready when it does happen.
All right, like I said, Steve Shamo is probably five, my six or seven, high in front of this council over the last fifteen years or so. Voting system that you currently have, the voting panels originally revolved by Health and Act money in 2004, five, in that era. And then recently, the state threw a federal grant, added the paper trail device and the booth, what they did not replace was the internal voting panel itself in them. That panel, by the time we get to the next presidential election, will be nearly 30-year-old electronics in that device. And so in nineteen, we developed a new panel to start phasing out the old one, and started using higher security protocols within the panel, and then enhanced the screen with a color screen to give different color differentiation. Particularly important for you guys in the county council at large races, they're no longer attached to the straight party. So if somebody pushes straight party on the front end, it highlights every office, but the county council at large office is clearly not large in that sense. So that's one of the biggest ballot features and changes. So I like to get like two, three years ahead of everything on this stuff, because in this situation, to replace all 55 panels will be about $156,000. And that's nothing that everyone wants to hit in one given year. And so my goal, and our company goal, is to have all the counties on the new panel for the presidential election in 2028. That's when the security questions will start coming back in. The protocols will be higher, and they get much more attention on the devices. There's nothing wrong with your machines. They'll continue to go past that point, but you should know that at this point, we are repairing with either used parts or parts that have been shut for several years. So we are getting to the end of life on a 30-year electronic device. So a lot of counties already, we have 52 counties in the state on our voting system. I'd say about 30% has switched over to this device now. I think another 30 to 40% will, will convert over the next year and a half, and then the ultimate goal had everybody by 2028. And so I attempt to try to absorb it, because it, it does kind of come up every 20 years or so. What we've been doing as a company is, in that first initial purchase and delivery of the system, if the county is able to establish 60% of the overall cost of the system, then we can extend the balance out over the second and third year if necessary, and prefer no interest to the company, so it's not a long. The, your county already has four of these, that they bought with additional funds left over a year, year and a half ago, that were used for early voting. But we, right, so right now, we have two different devices in the county. But when you start phasing into a county-wide implementation, you do want to be on one basic platform for the training purposes. You don't have to pick which precincts and locations, get the color screen, which ones don't. It, it starts to become a little bit of a hassle in the training. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at with it. Other than that, everything else seems to be running fine, that there's really no other upgrades necessary to the system. Equipment's fine. Joan reached out the other day and made certain that she had the exact numbers for budgeting for next year's election cycle. So she has that accurate going into next year. That's the first and foremost. But again, I just wanted to give a two, three-year heads up on this. And if the county's interested and continue going forward with Micro Boat, then this would be an opportunity to start, you know, looking ahead and realizing every year, over the next couple of years, that we may have to, to do this. Any questions over that?
You're going to make those old ones obsolete? Start a back to switch?
They are, they, I'm hoping not to. Anyway, so just so you know, I've got that for everybody too. Couple options there. The, the, no, we're not going to, we don't plan on making it obsolete. I think obsolescence will come with federal certification process. If they, for some reason, were to mandate a higher security protocol, like right now, it's password protected by one level. And then this device, you start finding multiple layers of security for each and every person that comes through the process. There, it, it just gets very, more secure and more complicated at the same time.
So, that is dictated by the federal government, some security associated with these voting machines?
Yeah, every time you go back through a recertification process, they look for more improvements and for upgrades with it. I still see this as another twenty-year product, especially since the electronics are no, your old machines have been once voted on, you feel a hot spot on them. That's twenty-year-old electronics. Basically, thinking of an old laptop versus a new cell phone. That's the difference in the technology between these devices. But currently, the product is certified federally, going through, that every voting machine vendor has to recertify with the state of Indiana on this awful election year. So, we'll go through that. It's, it's just most of the paperwork at this point because this is, they've been used for so many years. But there will be the establishment and the certification.
So, we have fifty-five, but we've already got.
Fifty-nine.
I was going to say, we already have four, right?
Yeah, yeah, four already.
We have fifty-nine?
Yes. And I think that before, before we were to act on anything like this, we'll take a step back. It is very counting. We determine if that is a true and accurate number based on growth over the last ten years. You know, whether or not it's a vote center scenario, anything that changes the dynamic, that would reduce it. I don't necessarily see a reduction in voting machines when a county goes from precinct base to vote center. Because you have the same number of voters. Sometimes it does, but only because you were given excessive amount of money in the two thousand and four half a grant. So, that was a per precinct basis. And so, you may be able to absorb some, but if you did move, you know, down the road, you may open an additional early voting site, which would absorb more panels too. So, yes, we definitely take hard look at that before we go in and see if this is the right number.
And if there's a grant that opens up that you become aware of, you will make the county swear, I'm, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
So, we can know, because I mean, I monitor that, so.
If there's a grant that shows up, I guarantee you, whoever the secretary of state will show up waving flags.
We just want to make sure somebody's watching it.
Yeah, and currently, right now, there, there are none. There are some grants for other electronic smaller items, but they did not extend to the voting machines. Other than that, great to see you guys again.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Next, we have. We have Commissioner, Commissioner Cole requested to apply for solid waste grant. He had sent us an email, said he was unable to attend the meeting, but he would like to apply for the Indiana Community Recycling Grant Program. And this, wanting to apply for, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five match and for modified trailers. He originally said they were like forty-five hundred dollars a piece, but then I talked to him today and he said, "We need to put those at five thousand a piece just to be safe." Because they might need modifications of the doors, to put an extra door in the front and have one in the back as well. And if approved, they're asking for six. If they get to apply for this grant, they want to ask for six and it'd be total of thirty thousand. So, they would come up with the match from the ARP solid waste fund that they have set aside. So, maybe just use that money for the match. But I guess this is asking for permission to apply for that grant. I think the deadline's coming up soon, so I would say, but like.
So, it's not going to cost us anything?
It's not going to cost the county, no. They, they said, I mean, the ARP funds are already solid waste, so that's where the grant match would come from, if they would get the grant. And I think the trailers, he was telling me that the trailers, all the ones that we have are all in use. And so, it'd be beneficial to have six more trailers to go out to businesses and places that need.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion made by Gail.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Stan. Any questions? Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Motion passes seven to zero. And the next thing we have is the two thousand twenty-six council budget request. Basically, it's just, I sent out the, the form that Chris sent me and asked if there were any changes and I don't see any changes. I don't want a salary increase or anything, so I just wanted to confirm what you guys want to do. If you want to leave it the same as what it was for twenty-five, I mean, it's pretty bare bones. It's just the basic salary, but we receive a four thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars, the attorney fee. I don't know if it's going up. That's, it's five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. That's what we have. And then a travel, two thousand dollars, that's for any conferences that we would decide to go to. And then subscription and dues, four hundred and forty, so. Does anybody, want any changes to that or make it the same?
I'll make a motion to leave it the same.
Okay. Motion made by Paul, to leave it the same as twenty-five?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. We've got to set a precedent ourselves. If we expect other people to participate, I'll make a second.
Okay, seconded by Brad. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes seven to zero, to keep it the same. Thank you. And then the last thing we have here, that we added, or that I added, sorry. I got a call from Drew Stiles with the Derby Community Association. He asked whether the council would be willing or not to provide a letter of support for a grant that they're pursuing for the T-Mobile Hometown Program. They're seeking fifty thousand dollars in funding to purchase new composite playground equipment for Malzur's Park there on the Derby Riverfront. Barry mentioned the current wooden equipment is kind of in poor condition and needs some replacement. He said, "They're not requesting any financial contribution from the county, only a letter of support to help strengthen their application and demonstrate that we're supportive of their efforts." So, I drafted a letter and I sent that to everyone for review. I don't know if anybody has any changes or if they're okay with it, or this, now's the time to discuss, so.
Letter was well, well-written, very supportive.
I think it's a great thing. I think the Derby Community Association has put a lot of effort into the area there and they've made a lot of improvements. They continue to make improvements and volunteer their time and money and it's very much appreciated, so. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion too.
I'll second.
Motion made to approve the letter of support by David, seconded by Gail. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? No. Motion passes seven to zero. So, we'll sign that, so make sure you stay around for the end of the meeting because he needs that scanned and back over to him right away so that they apply. Our next meeting is Thursday, August twenty-eighth at five o'clock. And if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Stan.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Paul. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks everyone.
I'm going to use a motion.